Good evening and welcome to the June 2nd School Committee Meeting. We've been in the executive session discussing contract negotiations. So I'll go through the agenda tonight. We're gonna take up the minutes from the November 18th regular meeting. We're gonna hear a couple of school improvement plans for the high school and for the middle school. We're gonna discuss the high school global competence program. We're going to finalize the school committee meeting dates for the next year. We're going to have an update on the bus contract negotiations with superintendent. And then we will have some district recognition, public input. That was a proud teaser. And that's it. So with that, we'll start with the minutes if we're ready to approve them.
We have to table those minutes again because those are for us to approve.
Oh, okay. So we'll table the minutes from November 18th. And so the first improvement program then is for Robert Targert's high school improvement plan. You ready with that, Robert?
Yes, all set. I am going to highlight some items for our school improvement plan for next year. I want to take this opportunity to thank our site council for helping me, being able to sort of create this, shape it, and develop some new ideas and a nice resource for us. So I wanna thank those folks as well. So as you can see, our school improvement plan is divided up into several themes that we use. So I'll highlight a few items from each thing, but certainly if there's anything that stands out or anything you want clarification under place then to ask some questions. So under the first theme, which is about facilities, equipment, and technology, what is a school improvement plan without technology, right? So we'll start there. Obviously, we've taken a big step forward this year with our one-to-one initiatives with our freshmen. And after somewhat of a rough start in the fall with some infrastructure issues, it's really going very well, especially here in the second half of the year. And one of the things I told our teachers, who had some trepidation in the fall, is what you're doing now will look a lot better in October, and it'll look a lot better in February, and it'll look really good towards the end of the year. And we're sort of in that phase now where I think they're feeling really good about the work they've done this year. So with that, looking forward to next year, obviously those freshmen are gonna be sophomores, and a year from now, half our students are gonna be in a one-to-one device program at the high school. All our sophomores will continue their BYOD program, and we're inheriting a group of freshmen who are in a one-to-one program right now at the middle school. So we're very excited about the pace at which we're going. As you know, professional development is a big part of our initiative. We started a year ago working with EdTech teacher. They've been fantastic in preparing our teachers for this one-to-one learning environment. So they worked with our teachers a year ago in preparation for this year, and they've been working with our current sophomore teachers in preparation for next year. So we stayed a year ahead of professional development. So going into next year, the professional development through EdTech teacher will continue. So we're gonna train actually the rest of our teachers. We've trained more than half our staff now, which is nice, so we're getting there. So we'll train the junior and sophomore, our junior and senior teachers that haven't had the training yet, as well as new staff that will be coming in. So we're looking forward to spending more time with them as we prepare our building for this one-to-one initiative. Also in facilities, equipment, and technology...
Robert, could I ask you a question?
Yes. Sure.
So I know, and not without getting into like details of which particular brands or anything, but has there been some analysis of which of the devices seem to be better suited for what we're trying to do, or is there a plan to have some analysis on that?
Well, what we've done is, so with BYOD, we've used a lot of the Google Suite, and it's sort of the great equalizer, if you will. So the Google Suite can be accessed through any platform, whether it's the PC, Mac, Samsung tablet, or an iPad. So we've used that to collaborate, to share, to exchange work, to do research. So that's been sort of the main platform, if you will, that our teachers have used. I know at the middle school, they've done, you know, some work strictly with the iPad. And it'll be interesting for us next year when we get those same teachers who taught with a bring-your-own-device environment this year, they'll be teaching in an all iPad environment next year. So we'll really get some good comparison data. The teachers themselves have been using iPads, knowing full well that the students coming out would be using iPads. We wanted to sort of train on a single device, which is why our teachers this year use them. There hasn't been from students any complaints about some of the non-Apple product, and I say that because the Apple products are just so popular with students. They all want them, they all like them, they all believe that's the device. I'm not entirely certain that in terms of the BYOD program, if one is more advantageous than the other. I think there are some benefits to having one platform, which we'll see next year, but I'm not entirely certain that in a BYOD one-to-one environment, there's a significant difference between a, say, a PC laptop and an iPad. Portability and things of that nature, screen size can play, but in terms of the features that we're using, it might, we might see more of a difference when all the students are using one device, like we'll see next year. Moving on a little bit away from technology, so one of the things that we are just starting to look at now, on the bottom there is the turf of the high school. So as you might know, that's now 10 years into, it's been 10 years since it was installed, and the life of the turf was eight to 10 years. So we've been having conversations with Dr. Marsden and our athletic director about, okay, what's sort of the vision here as we move into the next couple of years, knowing full well that the turf is starting to show its age or wearing out in certain spots. And we know at some point, we're gonna have to really address that, the idea of replacing it. There's no doubt about the fact that it's been an asset to the community for athletics. The communities use soccer, use lacrosse, whatnot. And so it's been, it's been a tremendous asset for the community. So I think we're all on the same page there. I think what, you know, certainly the challenge from here going forward is really how to finance and how to robot replace in that. The track itself needs to be done as well. So over the next year or two, we're gonna have to really upgrade our athletic facility. Dr. Marsden, I don't know if you wanna comment on that.
So we met with field turf, was that last Thursday, Robert?
The cold day.
Whatever the cold rainy day was, we were out there. And they, we just wanted a representative from a company to come out and give us a sense of what this is going to cost. So I keep hearing all these numbers, and we're talking about it. So they went through and took a look at our turf. One of the things they did recommend is that because we're not getting new turf over this summer, to do some maintenance to the current turf, so we're gonna have them come in to do some maintenance to our turf to get it ready for the fall season. But we also wanted them to look at the track, look at the, look at our turf field, and then the possibility of putting a turf field behind Blake, where the football team practices now, where the track meets our, right alongside the softball field. Because that would open up a lot of practice times for field hockey and soccer, et cetera, so we wouldn't just be using the turf all the time. So one of the things that we wanted to get from them is what would be a number if we could do all three, if we could get a replacement of the current turf, add that turf, and then do some work to the track as well. So they were talking about 1.5 million for all that. So it actually will look, if we were to be successful with this, it would look like the Westwood model they have now, where they have a stadium, and then a practice field to the left of the stadium behind the school, so that the town, the youth sports, everyone gets to utilize those fields. I've been in contact with some folks around the youth sports in town. We're gonna get together probably by the end of June and just talk a little bit about that, some of the folks that were part of the original group 10 years ago, and just have a conversation around that and see. I think, you know, Timmy and I have talked about the importance of elementary parents in this project, because the elementary parents, their children are playing on these fields, they're gonna be using them in youth sports, and to try to engage them in that conversation. But, you know, I think the trend that you're seeing is that towns are bonding these projects out. You know, Metfield has never had to do that because of the generosity of folks in town and certainly the donations of fields and all of that. So we'll have to take a look at, I think the economy has shifted a heck of a lot from those days when that was built 10 years ago. And we'll look at maybe a plan that would maybe marry the fundraising and the bonding. Maybe there's something left to kind of flesh that out a little bit. But we're looking at this season, this fall, playing on it, and possibly next season, and then the following summer, having a new field for them. We don't wanna get to the point where MIA is telling it to play away games.
Next summer?
That'd be the summer after.
Twenty sixteen?
Right.
Twenty sixteen?
Yeah, twenty sixteen.
Well, it's definitely beyond what most people consider that useful life, because they always thought they were 10 years, they were stretched in. I know people are complaining about that. And I know Medley just approved two turf fields, they found, and they were like, they're...
They did. And they actually installed their turf after we...
Yeah.
I mean, I think what a lot of our athletes are coming back in certain categories is just about everyone in Tri-Valley now, since we put ours in, they've installed a new one. So almost everywhere they go, they're playing on a new turf, so I think they know that even more. I believe Westwood, which has a lot of land, or not Westwood, sorry, Hopkington, which has a lot of land, so they're able to preserve that grass field. I think just about everyone else is on the turf and the TV on now. Bellingham just did theirs in that fall.
Is it gonna last like two summers? Because this would be the summer of '14, summer of '15, so it's like two summers.
That would be the end of it, yeah. So it would be this fall and next spring, the following fall and that following spring. So it'll be, you replace the summer of 2016.
But that doesn't...
That's the end of it.
That's a long time to get out of town.
So we're hoping that the maintenance we do this, this summer...
Will carry you two years.
Will kind of put a band-aid on it and lift us into the next few years.
I don't think that, maybe there's a way to get sharing, like a sharing process, but I just can't see private getting a million and a half dollars rate. That was a half a million dollars 10 years ago, and that's an awful lot of stretching from a lot of people. And even in the end, it was a major sort of contribution in a few individuals, particularly... I think we need to think about, you know, how we approach that in the budget context somehow, whether it's sharing or...
Is there any possibility of doing it at some, or is that just...
Well, I think if we were to put it on FY15 capital, should be FY16 capital, and the town board would be involved in that town meeting, I just think with the building projects in town, with public safety, and that, we're gonna look for additional funds for boilers, if the timing is right.
Yeah. I just went from kids that is like nine months on trade, and I think they're starting to get injured. I don't know if you're hearing that too, Robert?
I'm not entirely certain if the injury part is there. It does feel good, certainly the fall. But as Dr. Marsden said, we're hoping that the conditioning that will take place over next summer should, should improve the quality of the turf itself.
Is that what they're telling you, that what they're doing this summer might extend away from that?
Correct, yes.
No questions? Just got to... Well, I think it's, it's gonna be neat to see what that does, you know. What they told us, they vacuum out all the rubber pellets, and they bring the fibers up, and then they replace all the rubber pellets back in. So it really conditions the whole field, and, you know, they said that probably every year we should do that.
Every three years, and we've not done it before. So, you know, it's probably something we should have perhaps looked at in the years past, but we've not. So he was recommending that, especially if you get that second half of the life of the turf, that it needs more, and he did want it. So more to conclude, we are not, and again, it's something that obviously a big discussion that will take place. Moving on a little bit into curriculum, instruction, and assessment, one of the items that is always of interest to students and families are new courses that we offer each year. So one of the things that we do each fall really is, is we really assess our program and studies to make sure that what we're offering students sort of meets their needs and is current and certainly, you know, appropriate for high school students. And we have found courses that we offer at some point that students just aren't interested in, and they come to us with different ideas, and then, you know, sort of sparks up all discussion of, well, what if we created this course, and what if we created that course? So the students are always interested to know what new courses we have offering next year. So we have a few new ones. Mandarin Four will be offered, so that's, for those of you that have been here a while, that's just a continuation of the progress of our Mandarin program. The students are now, who are now taking Mandarin Three, we want to be able to offer them Mandarin Four next year. So hopefully, I'll be standing here next year telling you we're offering Mandarin Five as well. But Mandarin Four will be a new class next year. Graphic Design Two, so Graphic Design was a new class this year that was very popular with students, and they really enjoyed the skills that they developed in that course, and so much so that we decided to offer a Graphic Design Two course for them. Obviously, the pre-requests of being Graphic Design One. So that's a new course we're gonna be offering. And AP Environmental Science as well. As you know, we offer online courses to students, and we sort of look at that involvement as well. And sometimes we notice trends of students taking classes online, and AP Environmental Science was one that students were interested in and have been taking. So we sort of figured, well, why don't we offer it here and see what happens? So we're actually very excited to bring that one into the building as well, so this new course. Moving on a little bit here, under leadership, I'm gonna move up forward here to management and leadership. We've had obviously a transition in leadership of the high school. Katie Noons is here, but you know that Katie's retiring in September. And so we had a search for her replacement, and Heather Mandosa, who is our current guidance department head, is going to be our next assistant principal of the high school. So there'll be some transition there. We're lucky to have Katie on through September, so there'll be a little bit of overlap, so Katie can work closely with Heather. They work closely as it is, but they could certainly work closely so that they, that transition is a smooth transition, so we're excited to keep Katie on for a little bit longer. That actually opened up another hole in our leadership team as the guidance department chair. So Stephanie Workley, who was a guidance counselor, is now gonna be the department head for guidance. So we're very lucky that we've got folks on staff who are talented that can fill these roles, and I'm excited to bring Heather on board, and certainly Stephanie moving up is a good thing for us as well. So we'll be obviously supporting Heather in her transition. Jess Berlin and I obviously work closely, and we'll work closely with her to make that as soon as possible. Under theme six, communication and community outreach, so one of the things, getting back a little bit to technology, so we've done some surveys with families regarding technology, and one of the things that we're hearing from families is that, you know, we really like what you're doing with technology for our students, can you do something for us? So Neil Sonnenberg, who's our technology integration specialist, and I have been talking a lot about offering workshops for parents actually next year, and sort of what we are doing in terms of the one-to-one program at the high school. So Neil's actually putting together a series of workshops that families can come in so they can really understand how we're using devices, if it helps the students with devices. This to some degree comes almost second nature to the students, but it doesn't always come second nature to the parents. So they're kind of clamoring for, what are you doing with this? What's Google Drive? And what are all these different apps that you do in the classroom? How can you sort of help us help them? So Neil's gonna put together some nights in the fall, we're gonna invite families who are part of our freshman and sophomore one-to-one programs, so we can start working a little closer with them. We haven't done that as much to this point, and I wanna do some opticians on as well. So those are some highlights from our, our school improvement plan. Happy to answer any questions you might have or clarify anything.
Robert, could you skip a little bit to your experience at the college board meeting with AP and how they found you and discussed that field results?
Yeah, so we've, we've done really well in AP, and, you know, I think that one of the things that we know of our students is that, you know, they work hard, they do well academically, they've gone on to, you know, fantastic colleges and having success. So one of the things that Metfield's always been high on, and certainly that's becoming more so over the past couple of years, is our number, the number percentage of students taking AP courses. So, and I've always been torn to some degree because, you know, you sit back and you think, well, are there students taking AP classes that perhaps shouldn't be taking AP classes because our percentage is so high? So it's always been sort of, you know, in the back of my mind, wondering if we're pushing that too much to some degree. So we ended up with, now this is data from a year out, because they just released it a couple of months ago. So last year's AP data showed that we had the highest participation rate in the state. I think it was seventy-some odd percent of our students are taking an AP class, which is pretty high. The data that came back that was very exciting to hear was that we had the highest percentage of students who scored three or higher on those exams. So when I was talking to folks at the college board, as Dr. Marsden just alluded to, they were explaining to me that statistically, that's incredibly difficult to do, because in theory, if you have a high percentage of anything, you know, that tends to lead you to believe that, well, maybe you've got some students in there who might not really fit the qualifications for AP. So by the mere fact that we've got a high percentage of students taking AP classes, and we had the highest percentage of students with three or above, was very satisfying and rewarding, thinking that, wow, here we go, we've got students, a lot of students who are taking AP classes, and clearly they've been prepared for these classes. So it was very exciting, and a couple people from the college board, I was at a conference in Los Angeles about a month ago, hosted by the college board, and a few folks recognized my badge as being from Metfield, and were asking me a lot of questions. In fact, we're having a team in in two weeks. They just wanna come in and talk to us and figure out what we're doing and how we're producing numbers like this. So that was exciting news, because again, I think that as we talk about students and how they are making their way through high school, you know, being a well-rounded student is so important to us. It's not just the academics, it's, we want them involved in athletics, and theater program, and art, and music, and we want them to enjoy those activities beyond the classroom. And I think we do well in those activities beyond the classroom, and I always wonder, are we pushing that academic piece too much with the AP? But then when you look at the data that shows that, yes, we do have a lot of students taking AP, however, as a group, they're doing incredibly well, that's very impressive. I think we were at, I think it was seventy-nine percent of our students scored three or higher on the AP exams, and the next closest city or town was Sharon, I think they were at seventy-two percent. And I don't think anyone in the state would be beyond seventy. So our students are doing incredibly well. The majority of the students are current seniors.
Do you have any, like, anything, can you point to anything of why that's happening when the board comes? Did you tell them or...
I told them that we'd have some answers for them. I mean, you know, again, it's, as I've said before, the success that we've had at the high school, you know, we attribute right back to the work that's going on at the middle school, what's going on at, at the elementary school level as well. I think it's a whole community effort here. I think it's the support that the parents give us when we need resources for and need and exciting activities. You know, we talk about, you know, the one-to-one program, we talk about the funding need for certain things, we talk about the turf field, we talk about, you know, a lot of programs that cost money, but at the end of the day, they're providing incredible experiences for our students. So I don't think our students are getting, you know, incredibly bright when they walk 30 yards across the grass there from Blake to the high school. I just think it's a real community effort. I think there are a lot of good things happening, I think students are coming in prepared for high school, I think students are leaving here prepared for college, and I think it's a collective effort. There's a lot of support at home, you know, a lot of support within the community. So that's the best answer I can come up with.
I like to think it's all the middle school.
Well, I was there for them. But no, I really do, I really do think it's just a collective effort. It's, it's nice that the high school gets the recognition, but it's really something that reflects the hard work of the district.
One other last thing before you go, the teacher evaluation system this year, how does that go?
It's going pretty well. We're just finishing sort of phase one, if you will. This year, we, there are four standards in which teachers are measured, and this year, the association, through some negotiation, decided that we would look at two of the standards. So we're looking at two of the standards this year with a group of teachers going through at all the districts. It certainly is a different way for us to do evaluations. I personally like the idea of getting in the classroom more and being able to have more informal conversations with teachers regarding their practice. I think that as we are, the administrators are in the process right now, just finishing end-of-the-year evaluations for our teachers that are within three years of employment here, and we're starting our work with veteran teachers as well. I think the jury's still out. I know administratively, we meet regularly to talk about some of this, but, you know, I'm certain that'll be some of the conversations we have over the summer. I know personally, I've, I feel like I've approached the different teachers that I've had slightly different, and I think that we're all trying to figure out the best way to use this tool to support teachers when they're in the classroom. So big picture, I think in general, it's a good move for us, and I'm looking forward to as we, you know, become more and more familiar with this program, to see, you know, what I think will be more supportive for teachers in the future.
Can I ask what the two of the four standards are, or quickly?
Yeah, the first one is curriculum assessment, curriculum planning assessment. The second one is student...
Teaching all students.
Teaching all students, I was gonna say student engagement, teaching all students. So those were the two standards that we adopted this year. There are two other standards that will be adopted next year, which speak to community outreach, teachers, you know, maintaining communication and contacting families, and figure many other courses.
So it's professional, related to professional development?
Basic professional responsibilities in that area.
So the teachers, that will be evaluated, next year will be evaluated on all four. Great, thank you.
Do you want to stay up and talk about the global citizenship program?
I would love to, but I'm actually gonna have Katie do it.
Okay.
I'm here to talk to you about a global citizenship program that would get kids a global competence determination. I'm excited about it because, as Robert mentioned, with me retiring at the end of September, my very first work was in language teaching. So I was a French teacher and a Spanish teacher in all my career, and even here have just spent a lot of time up in the world language department, and I am so excited to hear about the different kinds of things our students do, from the trips that they take to the exchanges that they've had with students coming here. We've had students go on the World Challenge Program to Costa Rica, which weren't necessarily language students a few years ago. We've got the trip coming up that Robert, with the environmental science students next year. So there's lots of stuff, and plus, being in my role, having kids that unrelated to school are doing things in other countries and with other cultures, so kids who go abroad for a semester, or kids who do volunteer work in community service. So a couple of years ago, I went to one of the tech assistant principals' meetings in Needham, and they had someone speak about this global competence program that they had. And it was something that tried to tie a lot of things together around a student's travel experience and whatnot. So I made an appointment the next, probably was the next year, to go and talk with the guy who was the director. And he was great. He told me all about, you know, how they did it. He said, here are all of our documents, like, we've been sharing these with lots of schools, just don't start, you know, with reinventing the wheel, you know, take our stuff, use it. Robert sent me to a meeting last year where there were several schools, Hingham was another school that was there, and they had used some of Needham's materials as well. And I guess Needham originally got their materials from Boston College, because they had a parent who had, a parent who worked at Boston College, and there was a global certification program there. So it's kind of all been trickling down, and when I heard about it, I thought, our kids have these experiences, and I would love to have them do more than just, you know, go and come back and, you know, have that to themselves. So I've been thinking about this for a long time. I appreciate that Robert has supported it, and I was very glad that Dr. Marsden was interested to hear about that as well last year. So I don't know if you had a chance to look through any of the materials, but there is an international travel component, but one of the things that I was excited about as I was hearing what some of the other schools did was, well, what about kids who can't do international travel? A lot of the international travel programs are really expensive, so it's fine for them, you know, kids who can do that, but what if it is interested in other cultures and wants to do something? So there are a lot of opportunities, I think, to do a travel equivalency thing, where you think of something that you could do to immerse yourself in another culture, but around here in another area that's not Metfield. So, you know, I can think of things in Jamaica Plain and things in Chinatown, and things that kids could do as a travel equivalency, as long as the time they spent was equal to, you know, a trip that someone might do for a few days and put some time into it. So that's the travel piece. The academic piece, obviously, we want our students to be studying language, so putting that piece in. The global service, we don't have a community service requirement here, but I think that lots of students do community service, and I think tying it in with a program that would involve, you know, work in the global community would be great. A global focus project, just another way to explore some different... A global focus project, just another way to explore some different avenues in the culture that the student is working on. And something I wanted to add that they didn't have in the other schools that I had heard about was that I also, even though I wanted the students to do more than just go and come back, I also didn't want them to just go and come back and write about it and talk to a committee about it. I thought it would be important for the students to present to our students and staff. So I put in a presentation piece in that. I think about our senior project that students do at our school if they want to. And I think that if this were part of the global competence of students coming up with an idea for what they wanted to present about the experience that they had had, that they would be able to do that as well. I had talked to some people to ask them if they would be interested in being on a committee to look over students', you know, projects as they were going forward with them. And they had gone with me to hear the program at Needham. So Kevin Murphy in the social studies department did that. And he's also done a lot of world travel in his prior jobs. Heather Mendoza was interested as guidance. I asked Paula Hamilton in the world language department. And they all said that they would be interested and would like to continue. Now, of course, it's sort of the last moment now that I'm presenting this. And I'm thinking, well, maybe just having somebody who's been in the Medfield community and had an interest, maybe I could come back just to sit on the committee and listen when some of these projects come to fruition.
Of course, consider your efforts.
Okay. Also, if anyone, you know, they have a school committee member in Needham on their committee. So if anyone's interested or, you know, someone in the community who could be interested, certainly, you know, the more the merrier because I'm sure it'll be fun to look at. This, we were seeing this as something that kids, I want to tell kids this year because I know, you know, the kids that I went on this game trip with, I was lucky enough to be one of the chaperones on this game trip. There are plenty of kids that are in the junior class who have had experiences already, who might want to hear about this and pull something together just to get this going next year. I originally was gonna put all of this stuff up on a folder on Edline that people could look at, except we're not gonna be keeping Edline. We're moving to a different portal. So I thought, if I went next week, I have the ninth graders coming during a reading period one day and the 10th graders coming during reading periods another day. And the junior class has a meeting another day. So if I talk to each grade and just talk to them about the ideas and what they would be thinking about and then encourage them to come and see me, and then I could kind of go through the materials with them and hopefully get a lot of kids, you know, even if you think about ninth graders who might have had an idea or done a mission trip with their church or something like that, could say, oh, wow, this would be really nice. We thought that, you know, we could give this certificate to students and when they're seniors, they could get this presented to them at class day, like the other kinds of recognition kids get. If it was something that they wanted college to know about, but it was something they hadn't quite finished, here's a little resume piece of it that students can put together and the guidance counselors can highlight that in a letter. Or I can foresee kids in college interviews being very excited to talk about something they want to do. So that, I don't know if I forgot anything, but do you have questions?
Yes. So it sounds like you have a plan for recruitment in terms of getting kids interested in it.
Yeah, well, the initial one is talking to them about it and hoping they're interested. And with the guidance counselors knowing about it, they know already kids who have done things that I might not know about, who can kind of reach out to kids. And then hoping that kids talking to kids will do it.
So is there a day where kids talk about about these things? Because my husband teaches at Needham High School.
Yes, so I went to that.
Okay, yes.
So that was in the fall. I think it was late October. That what they have is an evening where kids can come. And then they invite any of the travel groups that kids have used or that they've used in Needham for their programs. And they have them kind of like vendors there for people to come to. And then they had some of the teachers who had gone as chaperones presenting trips that they had gone on. So I think that that would be a good way to go forward. I don't know how much of that I could plan for this coming fall.
No, exactly. Because it's such a wonderful program. It would be wonderful for it to be integrated more into the school. I don't know if they talk about more foreign language classes because that's such a big part of it. You would need to have competency in a second language.
Correct, yeah. Right, yes.
Or even in world history classes or anything.
Right, so I can foresee the world language program talking about the, you know, world history classes. I can foresee Cynthia Blum with the environmental science kids, you know, the kids who are going on that trip, talking to them. Because, you know, there might be kids who, you know, study the language, but they're not gonna be, they might also want to do their service in another country, but maybe not necessarily in the language if they're not as focused a language kid. But it doesn't mean that they can't learn a lot about a different culture when they're there and making their efforts in it. So, yeah.
So who, do you have a coordinator? Because it's tragic you're leaving.
I don't have a coordinator. We'll have to talk about, you know, whether Heather wants to just take that on. I was also, we had talked a little bit about maybe the person who is, will do senior project might be willing to take this project on since they both have that presentation aspect.
There will be a coordinator.
Yes, yes, because my husband's point at Needham is that sometimes you really need a strong coordinator to kind of really push it, advertise it, recruit. Because this year, they had eight kids who fulfilled the requirements. And, but I could see a lot of potential here in that field.
Be very willing to volunteer as a guest speaker at different times to...
Yeah, I mean, you sound like a champion of it, so it's, you need to be equal, champion.
You know, sometimes school districts use retired people to coordinate.
I think this is wonderful, though. Thank you for introducing us on that field because I think it's really worthy.
And thank you for taking for all the service I know will see you in September and the good summer.
Thanks.
The next item, I think it's...
Good evening, good couple, because you know I like to talk up late. Usually my joke is that sometimes I've gone last. My bedtime's about nine. I think we're good. So I just wanted to thank you. You can hear some common themes from what Robert talked about, who we do, work very closely together and a lot of the initiatives that are going on. So first off, I want to, as Robert did as well, thank Blake Site Council and our staff as a collaborative effort, putting the plans together, getting input from all the different constituencies. So really, you know, both the middle schools continue providing a real balanced approach to education. It's such a critical time, a vulnerable time for kids. And then we want to make sure that we're tapping into all the interests that I like to talk about. Two analogies, one's the rubber band analogy, stretching for every student as much as you can and for staff, but not allowing that rubber band to break. And the other one is to open doors. Really want as many possibilities and varied experiences for middle school for kids to keep a real wide range of programming going on. Because just as the nature of when kids leave the middle school and come walking a hundred yards over to high school, because of just the nature of what happens, some of those choices start to wind up. So we want to make sure that we expose as many possibilities in the arts, music academically too, to kind of tap into their interests. So they can make good choices for themselves. So, you know, theme one, facilities, equipment and technology. Definitely technology's been a huge piece and certainly with mobile learning. So this past year, we expanded from the eighth grade, one cluster pilot, the iPads, to the entire eighth grade. It's gone quite well. And we definitely, I think it was great to have that pilot team be there because they really became the leaders, the teacher leaders in that initiative. Also looking at different devices, we piloted in sixth grade, the Nexus ten tablets. And definitely, it was a great experience, testament to the teachers, but not a similar experience, I would think, device-wise. And so it really puts us in a better position, I think, to make a good decision as opposed to just saying, well, iPads are wonderful, let's just go with that. Because Nexus ten tablets are a cheaper option, but you see reasons as to why. So in, as we look ahead to next year, we're expanding to all sixth, third grade. So we'll be a one-to-one school next year, which is really exciting. Professional development.
Not D I O D, that's all one-to-one.
All one device, yeah. All iPads.
Teacher, I mean, school district provided.
Parent provided, yeah. So thank, big thank you to the community for their support. And I think, you know, in talking, we've talked a lot as a district too, is, you know, it's definitely a, we're very fortunate to be in Medfield. And the community support that we see in many different ways. A lot of counterparts in other districts, they have not been able to pull off, quote-unquote, pull off what we've been able to do to go forward. Because I think to do it right with mobile learning, it's extremely costly. And professional development is immense. And I think that's sometimes where we've seen in our colleagues and other counterparts, Robert and I have talked a lot, where I think that's been short-changed and it shows in the results of student learning. And also just, and this falls under this role, is we've really enhanced our wireless hubs throughout the school and really trying to prepare for that. Make sure the infrastructure's in place. We've got to give credit to Owen and his team for that regard because it has to come all together. And I think that's been a big piece that we've been looking at. We've also been piloting mini-MAX at the middle school and Coalition's very giving to help us pilot that. Because that's helping with our initiative too, as we look to publish student work on this floor and really work in conjunction with the iPad initiative. So that's been great. We're also expanding the world language lab, both the middle school and the high school. Again, that's in support of Coalition's help with that and our budget as well. And we piloted some of the new DIL software for the world language labs. And so that'll be coming into play at the beginning of next year. In the realm of technology too, something that we're really invested in is assistive technology for a lot of our students in special education, but for all students as well. And I think that's one of the more exciting things we found from mobile learning experiences, to individualize the teaching. The other piece that we're really looking at from a facility place, and this ties into our mobile learning initiative, is really updating our library media center, make it more of a learning collaboratory. And really investing money in furniture and also to make the space more of a hub of learning, which we're really excited about utilizing that space that I'm hoping the community can use as well. In addition, we're transitioning to, we're taking everything on as a district this year with Gmail, switching email, switching to a new database. So it's a lot, but we're kind of diving in deep into the pool altogether. So that's definitely gonna be a big piece with training as well. Curriculum assessment, we've definitely, you know, increased our use of shared folders and Google Drive. I think those mechanisms are really helping us collaborate and it really provide more common assessments and common approach to education, which is great. Aligning our curriculum for math and English with the Common Core this past year. These two initiatives I'm very excited about is we've been piloting the co-teaching model at the middle school, where we've had a special education teacher and a core academic teacher in the classroom co-teaching sixth, third grade in math and English. And it's gone well. We're expanding that. And I want to thank the school committee for supporting that and the community supporting that because it is costly. But it's an excellent model, so we're gonna be expanding that next year too. Another piece of curriculum assessment is that we have a homework study group as a staff that met about every two weeks. We met together, about fifteen of us, to really examine our homework practices, looking at, it's not an initiative. I think sometimes it's heard, oh, Mr. Blum wants to get rid of homework. It's not what it is. You know, but I want to make sure that it's purposeful and that it's practical. And really thinking about with the technology, how is that really change what we're looking at in homework? Does what we're giving right now impact learning? Because if it doesn't, we've got to change what we're doing in that way. And that ties into our stress and anxiety work that we've done too. Looking ahead to next year, excited about enhancing our response to intervention protocol with our student support teams. We want to establish more instructional practice guidelines so there's consistency within the departments as far as our approach to learning and teaching. And the other initiative, in addition to the homework study group, is what we're calling progress reporting study group, looking at our formal feedback to parents and students about how they're doing. When I think about the internal reports and report cards, and is it serving what we want them to serve? Looking more at being a standard-based reporting, similar to, I know the elementary schools are looking at too. And that doesn't actually just mean curriculum frameworks, standards, it could be Blake standards. So kind of, is the feedback we're providing what we want it to do? Is it serving that end? It's gonna take a lot of parent education outreach and shift models looking at that. But it's something I think is really important and timely to look at. And student life areas, theme three, creativity was our overarching theme this year. And next year, we're looking ahead for acceptance to be the theme for our community. And that's been a nice centering idea that we've done, is have to take on a theme as a community to be able to outreach to parents as well. We have annually, this is our third year administering the student and parent surveys, separate from technology surveys and interest surveys, looking at our academic expectations and student stress, balancing middle school, student life and peer-teacher connections and school communication. And the site council, we review this data every year to kind of look at, what are we doing? And really, is it increasing? We just got the data back on this parent survey and it was overwhelmingly very positive, but there's definitely some areas we need to work on. I mean, positive aspects are eighty-eight percent of our students feel that they, parents say that their children usually or almost always feel comfortable coming to school. When you think about the middle school years, that's a very high number. But that said, that ultimately means that twelve percent are. So we really need to be looking at those numbers and thinking about what can we do to try and make those kids feel more comfortable at a vulnerable age. Continue dialogue with the community, definitely expanding use of social media and looking at that for outreach. And also student life, to make sure that we're educating them well. Curriculum and I think student life go hand-in-hand for kids. And that ties into technology and the digital citizenry component that we really need to, I think, beef up with that curriculum. And I know that's a district-wide initiative that will be a part of. Looking at our advisory curriculum still, we've also this year formalized three no homework nights and weekends throughout the year around long weekends, which was a very nice response from parents and kids too and for staff to kind of make sure that we're harping out some real time for families as well and looking at that. Personnel, professional development, professional development is very important. And again, that's an investment that we will continue. The technology's been a big piece, but also for things beyond technology as well. Developing common assessments for all of our core subjects and making sure that they are being followed and adhered to. The teacher evaluation and, you know, Ted mentioned, Robert talked about, that's been a big piece of our professional development this year and it will continue to be and it should be. A lot of work with our content specialists and leadership team to making sure that we're trying to align, when we go into a classroom, you know, are we all saying this is provision? Or are we all saying this needs improvement? And what are we looking at? And why is that? And what does that discussion look like? It's important. Looking at school management, deliver, our special education program, I have to give credit to Corey Jacomo, her new special ed coordinator, she's been phenomenal. And she came up from Memorial. She's done an excellent job really looking at a fresh set of eyes at our programming and expanding that. We've expanded our access program for students with more intensive needs. And we're looking at that because that is a, that's challenged us, to be very honest with you, in a very good way. It's really expanding our services for all students. So that's important to us. From the school management piece too, you know, Dr. Marsden was a big piece about pushing our safety drills and we really, our crisis response team. We're practicing that formally and looking at that. We actually talked this morning about a little bit about what we can enhance more for middle school for that and run some more drills, looking at that. And then also just examining our structures, our master schedule. Because if some of the enrollment, you know, that's declining, if that continues, how do we maintain the middle school model? Which I know you've heard me talk a lot about because I know it's the right model. It's an expensive model, but we want to make sure that we maintain and also be physically responsible as well, that we can keep that essence of that. And then finally, communication, community outreach, really enhance communication as best we can. I believe in transparency of what's going on. We want to make sure we break down those walls, communicate as best we can and engage the community, such as supportive on all levels. We enhanced our guidance department outreach because that was something that came out of the surveys last year was that parents felt like their kids could go to guidance, but they didn't really know what guidance did. So the good news was is that they knew that their children would go to guidance, but we thought that we could do more outreach. So each of the guidance counselors gave fall coffees and spring coffees as well. Sort of talk about what's going on at that grade level, what are their roles in the outreach. And surveys this year showed about a twelve percent increase in the knowledge of role. So that was very positive for us. And then, you know, looking ahead to exploring, you know, Robert talked about as well, I think from all the surveys we've done, technology, I think we can do more for parent education. We've done a lot of nights showing what we're doing with the kids and that's been very well received. We've talked about doing Twitter workshops for parents, Google Drive workshops, it was very similar in that way. And I think we can do more. And I also believe we do it with real responsibility because the families are really invested in this process. Not just, I mean, financially investment, but also emotional investment, knowing it's wonderful they're doing what they're doing, but I have no idea how to help them. And I don't even know if what they're doing is the right thing. So we want to make sure that we can, we can do a better job at that, looking at that. So I know Diane, Orbaf and Neil are working together too, so we're looking at that. And then finally, the communication piece, I would say, any change that we look at potentially as an investment in the report card protocol and feedback is gonna take a lot of outreach... and some parent education in that, because it'll look different, and we want to make sure that we understand why, and also that we're meeting the community where they're at, as far as what is it that parents, what type of feedback will help them as parents as we look at. I'd be remiss not acknowledging the work of our staff, we're incredibly biased, but phenomenal staff, very committed to the middle school age, and also the CSA and the Coalition have been unbelievably supportive to allow us to do a lot of things that we may not be able to do, to embrace the opportunities beyond the traditional realm of the classroom. So, I know I speak quickly, it's a lot of information. Any questions that you have specifically regarding that?
Do you? Yeah, the middle school model that you mentioned, and how challenging those sort of challenges to that decline. So what do you think that becomes like a really crisis, seeing now a few years?
If we're looking at numbers, Jeff, you think about two years, two years current fourth grade?
Three.
Current third grade, yeah. So I think that's what it will be, and, you know, I think some of it is really looking at one of our staffing, and it's not saying that we want teachers to retire, but that's, I mean, that's a personnel piece that that may kind of address what we're looking at, and also looking at just some different models. A lot of it could depend on teacher certification as well. I mean, the old model was middle school teachers got, and I, when I first got my middle school certification, I had general certification, so in theory I could teach anything, and the state has really moved those requirements, and it's made it difficult. But we definitely, when we're looking at hiring teachers, you know, my advice always is new teachers get dual certified, get triple certified, that allows some flexibility. We're fortunate that we do have a number of teachers that are, so that allows us to be very creative in that way. We're looking at looping some teachers that teach right now, we're going to teach two K and seventh grade, and there's really some nice side benefits, it does sort of, you know, pardon the term, bastardize the cluster model, but there's been some real curriculum benefits, and recently, we've been teaching one section of sixth grade this year, the seventh grade math teacher's really helping with our alignment, so it's a side benefit, so it's not perfect, but those are the things that we're looking at. The co-teaching model, I think, will also help too, but we want to make sure that we maintain that classroom model, the communication model is just, I think, still critical for kids.
Nat, can you just talk a little bit about the ABL program?
Absolutely. So that is a piece that I'm really excited about, Kelly Campbell definitely took the lead on that, looking, and part of that was from experience that we had heard from other districts that had done, is the Anti-Defamation League, World of Difference Peer Training Program. And, you know, so this is a lot that we're supporting the Coalition help fund to kick this off, and it's a two-year commitment that we have, and they came and did a presentation, and we had, we were hoping, what is going to be coming is training of twenty-five to thirty-seventh and eighth graders to be our peer leaders, and really broaden the experiences for our kids. And it's going to be a perfect time for our theme being acceptance for next year, and really open eyes of students, and it ties, you know, similar goals, I think, this global competency program is really branch out outside of Medfield for our students, and what diversity is, because we don't have a lot of, but there are elements of it within the school. So, we were thrilled, we were just hoping, please, let's make sure we have, you know, enough applicants, we have over a hundred applicants for kids, which was phenomenal, real nice investment. And students, you know, which is a good thing, but also it's hard to let kids know, they can't, but they'll be involved, so it's a two-year cycle, so it'll be seventh and eighth graders next year who'll be involved in the program. Seventh graders, it's a two-year commitment, the eighth graders, obviously it's one year, and then the following year, in the spring of sixth grade, kids can apply to be part of it, and they'll be part of training throughout the year, and then they'll be doing workshops for a peer-training leadership program. So really excited about it, thanks for bringing up.
It would seem like your global competency thing could start to have some interaction. I know the kids are not in a pretty much certain form or opinion, but these will, at least they begin to get introduced to it.
I think the big thing is planting those seeds.
So in the eighth grade, they kind of can begin to make a decision on how they...
Absolutely. And it's, you know, a side benefit too, we often think about, can we, what can we give more opportunities for students to have leadership roles beyond traditional student council? You know, Medfield's very much a sports town, and we're hoping that this will tap into the interests of other kids, and we as a staff kind of silently recommended kids too, that we thought may not necessarily on their own go down this path, but it might be a good thing for them to find that niche and open the doors for them, so.
And you've got the same thing along with the bamboo exchange coming, right? How many kids do you have coming?
Ten, we have ten coming in October, so we're just finishing up collecting information from families who are interested in us for three weeks.
Super. And then the middle schoolers, or is it the high schoolers who are going to go over the following year?
We haven't discussed exactly which group, I'd like to take a group there the following school year, so we're on this kind of every other year.
Yeah, that's great.
We sent the jazz band last April, so now they're sending a group of kids this October, or next October, so I actually want to take a group of students the following year, and we haven't figured out the configuration, maybe Matt and I will do it.
But you're planting those seeds.
Yeah, right.
Great.
Anything else?
Oh, that's great, thanks.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the, really, thank you.
You've done well in economizing presentation.
I'm working on it.
So that's a leftover from our last meeting, you didn't vote on that. I think Chris is going to be part of that conversation, but he's okay with those, he sent me an email.
Yeah, back to me.
So do you want to make a motion to approve the school payment to meet down for next year?
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, if I could just bring up one more thing on old business, the bus contract?
Yes.
As directed, I sent the letter to the bus company this week, actually last week, requesting a meeting, and mentioned that the school committee did not accept the contract as presented, partly because we wanted to get more information on the two-tier personal tier, and I'm still waiting to reply to that, but I'm sure that we'll have a meeting the next week that will be gathered, and if anyone wants to be a part of that, certainly, I'll let you know at the time, and if two of you are wanting, you want to come.
Okay.
Sure. As soon as I hear you.
It is a hot topic, because then, you know, you go to different games, and people always ask what was happening with the start times, what's happening with the buses, they've had a lot of the hubbub, but even you mentioned that they were charging, I said, well, you know, we haven't finished it yet, because they were charging the same price for a three-tier as a two-tier, and people were, how could they do that? That doesn't make any sense. That's what we said.
Right, that's exactly what we said, just need some further clarification.
Right, right.
All right. So, the district recognition.
So I have one item before I get into that, we, as you know, we applied for a project on MSBA for boilers, replacement of boilers and relock. That was their accelerated repair program, and we put that in months and months ago. They came and had a visit about a month and a half ago, toured the facility, met with Alan Peterson, John Olson, myself, talked about the project, and they said they would let us know prior to their June meeting. Their June meeting is Wednesday at 10:00 a.m., and they called us today at 11:00 p.m. to let us know if we were accepted to the program, and will be finalized at the meeting on Wednesday, and it's exciting, because that's a huge project in terms of dollar amounts for the town with over three hundred thousand, and the state will reimburse it over forty percent, so it's a great, great project, we're excited about getting to do that, and now that we have forty-plus-year-old boilers that are going to be replaced, and we're going to borrow our time to begin with, so.
And efficiency of these boilers now are essentially, I mean, you'll see a significant productivity.
I bet, I bet. So we're excited about that, we have to go through all the phases, and once I, probably the next meeting I'll give the outline of that, or give me all the information on Wednesday, but we have to hit specific timelines that they've established, and it looks like we'll have to be a part of a special town meeting, which I think the town is looking to have in January and February, so that will be a time where we would go before the town meeting to ask for allocation funds for that, and then the state will reimburse us, it's a reimbursement program, so we have to come up with the money first, and then the state will give that back. So it's exciting, I know it's something that has been on Capitol, and Tim and I spoke earlier in the year about, you know, let's try to get the repair program, see if they can fund some of that, and work out well for us, so we're happy about that. Just have a couple of things on district recognition. Blake School had their mini marathon last weekend, went really well, and they raised over two thousand dollars for the Wimpoa and Ahenia Society. Their DC trip went really well, although one bus got home late, it was not this past Friday, the Friday before, I asked Nat to send me a text when he got home, and he texted me around a letter, so I must have fallen asleep, and I woke up at 4:30, and so I never heard a text, I looked at my phone, and he sent me a text at 1:10. Got home, so it was, it was a long, long trip for him, and I know the teachers, the chaperones, and the kids, so, but everyone had a great time, and if you got a chance to follow it on Twitter, it was almost like being there, because there were so many people tweeting, the trip was really neat. So every place they went to, there was a new tweet that came out, and it was a great time for them. We have the Dale Street Art Show coming up next week, that's next Monday, from six to seven thirty. This is also a busy time in high school, as you know. We have this week the graduation tea on Wednesday, senior recognition night on Thursday, class day on Friday, senior night at Four Kicks on Friday, of course, Sunday's graduation, and we have a first, I guess, in the state tomorrow night, we'll be hosting a semifinal game for the girls and boys across, MIAA told us today that no school has ever hosted a semifinal round on the same day for a boys' and girls' tournament, so that should be exciting, we hope the community comes out and supports the teams. Look forward to the break, and looking forward to it as they might put on camera.
We have a thing, public inputs, so, thanks. Do we also, anyone in the school community have any comments?
I would second that, I have children that follow Nat's tweets, I follow, they follow through me, so every time, he had a picture of every single spot, which was great for them to see, the little kids, what they have to look forward to.
Right.
Talk about planting seeds, you know, they get excited when they see it, it was very fun to them, yeah.
And then just good luck to the boys and girls.
For the seniors this week?
Yeah.
Sure is. Okay. With that, I think it's just a motion to adjourn, right?
Yes.
You want us to adjourn?
Aye. Aye.
This program was made possible through the generous support of your Medfield friends and neighbors, folks just like you, and thanks for watching.